And he's looking at me and I thought, yeah. And then he smiled, it's like a smile.
Oh, was it? Yeah, okay.
He said, you tell them. And then he's like, Jill, don't do that.
They just go all the way.
Jill, you don't know me, I do.
They live first.
Well, yeah, they'd already done some chairs. We've got some things in there, they're still working some other things, a couple of other rooms, so. They need a real nice guy.
Yeah.
And I know where it is. So I had to come up with something, you know.
You didn't believe me though, did you? You didn't believe me.
I knew we were.
You couldn't point it out.
He said, you're really nice. I said, well, yeah, I'm one of the committee of the hospital within my monitor.
John, just remind me you're on camera.
Perfect.
You're on camera.
Oh. I need people. This is all my. Get a picture up right now. I need to go there. I hope it didn't pick up. Where are your brother?
Jesse.
And he's a, he's a contractor?
Phoenix Superior.
What thing was it?
Phoenix Superior.
Oh, yeah.
Two guys up here.
There are. Oh, yeah.
Everything.
Started them all.
Yeah, the floor's got the heat system down. There's one corner.
It's around the water.
Twelve twenty-four.
Twelve twenty-four.
Yeah. And then that's the glass, glass ones going into for exits.
Glass tile?
Yes. Uh, well, this is the, uh, it's more expensive stuff. It's all the tile, that's top of us you get, so.
No, this carries on.
No, you didn't get, I didn't get. A lot of this is leftover. And then you just, you know, think of the big sections. You need big enough tiles as long as part of it's, it's about fifty years in the past. Yeah.
Obviously. Yeah. Another one.
Two dollars a day. Whether or not you want to.
I've seen phones, you know.
But you ever sent it? He's all courting the all-terrestial.
So I think it's maybe.
Oh, yeah. I think it was three. It looks like some.
Yeah, basically.
Well, they did have. It's like. The thing about this is, we do a little. Really quality right now. It just breaks down, so you need to be an expert. So if he's mentioned, there's.
Right, committing to our. Joining the place to play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bruce has to meet six forty-five tonight, so ask your indulgence if we might need to move around on occasion to make sure that we're there to cover the costs. We have the, uh, minutes from the regular meeting dated November nineteenth, twenty twelve. You should have all received a copy. I will ask, uh, briefly review those if you have not. And having done so, we will entertain a motion when ready to approve the minutes, notwithstanding any corrections, additions, or. additions, corrections.
I have a correction.
Yes.
Second line on page two.
Yes.
Uh, the radios need to be upgraded by January first. Oh, January.
Have any additions, corrections, operations? Other than previously noted. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion over. What should maybe Rob? Down. Over.
Aye, aye.
I don't have time to read it, so I guess I. There was another package, I just got it.
You got it?
Yes, just at station, because I honestly don't, I haven't, I was on page two.
I'm not very good at proofreading anyway. Thank God, Bruce fell asleep. Bruce has a very smart sex degree. City clerk's cash receipt report.
Cash receipts, the month of November. Seventy-nine thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
Motion to approve. Make a motion to approve. Rob. Debbie seconds, call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
What's our balance on the water fund asset today?
One second. It's right around eleven thousand.
Uh, as many of you know, our bond payment was due last week, meant two of them come due, pretty much just done pocket change in the water market. So it's not the end of the world since collecting water bills right away and making bills. It's not much fun to be down in the. Two to three figures on any account, especially water. And water main break would have put us pretty much in deep due to. You really don't have your service.
How much was the actual bond check for?
Call Bart, Shane, either of you?
There's two checks, one was for fifty-two thousand, one was for forty-nine, for total of about a hundred and thirty thousand now. There's also twenty thousands due in June, so they, they're roughly ten thousand dollars a month or a hundred and twenty-three thousand a year.
All right, uh, anything else on that? We'll move to the reports from city employees, committee chair. Shane, anything for you?
I have nothing to tell you this evening.
Can I see Bart here or anything? Rob, finance?
One, one thing I'm gonna wait till we get down to.
Connie, please. Coming from the police committee.
Um, I'm getting the radios, we're in the car and they're coming back, we arrange it's coming back Friday, we program the truck and the cordials. And Mark started his team for training today and finishes tomorrow.
I understand you beat the estimate by, what, two, three hundred dollars?
I am not.
I do know that Mark was here one day on his own time installing those radios, they look pretty good. Nice, nice installation. Dom? Can I have the sun there? Required effort. Misty? Water.
Do you want me to do the water bills then? Okay. The water in Swithani did not have a meeting, therefore, we did have two, um. Customers, I guess you call them. Two patrons that came in before the meeting to ask for, um. A deal on their water bills, okay, and we did accept those two, they signed a statement, they both said that they would have it made by a certain date this month. So we accepted those two.
Anything else? We'll take the chairs. All right, we'll move down to the claims submitted, Rob has reviewed the claims presented to the city. We have a list of who's circulated. Rob?
There are, um, a couple of things I wanted to go over on, on these. A couple of you had had some questions and, uh, the, uh, to the Stark County General Fund, that's for our radio, that's our dispatch with our, our deal with the, uh, with the county. When we dispatch with the county, that was the amount there. And then we have, um, this second page halfway down, uh, being incorporated. That's a communications, um, component for the R O system that talks to, you know, they talk to each other, Shane.
It's a, it, it was a moment, the R O talked to the, uh, plant to tell them months to come on and go off. And, uh, we just had to have some work done on it and B D A is about the only company to do it.
And then C N A purity, uh, is a bond for our state treasure. And we did submit, we did submit, uh, just a late claim that we received and, and that's flowers for one of our business owners that, that had a, uh, had a loss in the family. And we might want to do that as a city and I didn't want the bill to, uh, to wait, uh, for a whole month. So we did go ahead and submit that also. Does anybody else have any?
What is the general funding?
Uh, it's, um, a plate, it's a, it's radio, it's our dispatch bill for dispatching for once. We don't have any other questions, I would like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the submitted bills this month.
Connie seconds, prepare the discussion. Call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The water bills have been discussed. All right, we're moving on to the unfinished business section, Bruce, any thing on the attorney report unfinished? All right, um, we have a couple of rather important items to, uh, create up this evening. And, uh, we'll just go in order, I guess. Uh, we talked to Jim at the ambulance service, uh, some weeks ago, he was interested in expanding, we talked about TIF and some other things. The idea was, uh, put forth, hey, why not, uh, let him use the, uh, the city hall area, which is currently unused, has been unused for many years now. Quite suitable, well-heated, lit, the whole bit, Jim had a look at it and thought, well, it might work. Jim, where's yours?
Well, um, yeah, it'd be a good spot for us to visit, we're gonna, if, you know, it's approved, we're gonna use it for some of our daily office operations, where I can house anybody up there, anything like that. It's more or less, uh, they're expanding coverage areas, we're doing building for other agencies. A lot of phone calls that I'm making out on the bay because we got staff in-house, you know, things like that, so. Uh, we put together a look, and I didn't bring it with, um, but we put together a rough estimate of what it'll cost for us to get moved in there between the bricks and the walls and. Get electrical the way it should be, because there's not a lot of outlets up there, lighting and things like that, flooring and, um, we're right around seven thousand is what we're putting out for, which is acceptable on our side. So it's up to you guys with that, unless it's your tenants, I did talk to John, won't be an issue in the insurance script. So it's just matter of fact, and it's just like the year with, uh, you own the building in Wyoming, the angles dropped and going on, so we leased it, very similar to what we do over here.
Yes, Rob?
Well, I, and I just wanted to, um, with Jim talking, I wanted to say one thing, I had to, uh, make an emergency room visit about a week and a half ago and, and, uh. Talking to one of the emergency room nurses and, uh, she found out where I was from and she said, oh, we love your Stark County boys. We really like the Stark County, they just do such a great job, and I just, I just wanted to pass that on because she didn't have to say back, so.
I'm taking it off, too.
I thought it was, I thought it was very nice, so. I thank her instead of fix me and, you know. But I wanted to pass that on.
We've done a lot of improvements and we've had great support from the volunteer side, some are new full-time people, they've been really fit, so we've been blessed that way.
I too have heard very good remarks and comments and. Right, well, certainly.
Nice to have you right here in town.
Sure, do like it, you bet. From a practical point of view, Shane, do you have anything to offer on this, as probably you more than anyone would be familiar with our physical plant and our space requirements that now and in the future? What implications or ramifications this would have?
The only, uh, only time that we're over upstairs is when we pull that well and I have to go out the window onto the roof on the water plant. Otherwise, I can't remember the last time we've been up there or used it, there are some old records that, uh, I did talk to Tam and he said they weren't gonna utilize the whole thing, it could be moved to the front shelf. But, um, it's just, it's just got some stuff we're storing up there, it's all of it.
There's a lot of police stuff up there, a lot of old police records that brand new community is more safer and you guys have a huge, you guys have a minute up there tonight, we get the time to all go up there and take a look, which is all safe. There, I'm assuming it's full of old city documents, I mean, probably recently took a peek at one of them.
Got some regional city ordinances and stuff, so probably somewhere that would be, well, you know, not official condition space, so it'd be better for it, but.
I did go through that safe in eighty-five and was amazed at what was in there. It's still there.
A plan of that safe, it's, feel like it's out there.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere.
Moving in those closets, we wouldn't be using the closets anyway, just get the doors and get out there.
And money?
Bruce, just any legal entitlements here? Police in the space?
We usually have a part of lease.
Yeah.
Sort of my problem. You just stayed in a, no, I didn't see any problems.
Well, for the purpose of moving forward then, if we were about to propose a standard lease.
I, I move that Bruce, uh, prepare a lease for the ambulance service.
I think the ambulance service is anxious to get started, doing some work up there. Is there anything that we can do for them tonight that will assure them that.
Or we, where's the lease? Uh, I'm just, this is not, there's not gonna be a charge.
I think we had tossed around a small amount to cover the electricity and water. Shane, did you have a number in mind or Rob?
I have now, I.
Somebody could give that to me and, and link the time.
Yes, and all I would add on that is, um. The heat is already up there, Jim, act like maybe it wouldn't be sufficient.
We're already heating quite.
And we, you know, because we can't let, we keep at least fifty-five up there now. It's controlled by the heat downstairs.
We're not gonna increase our.
You will, I placed the electricity and stuff, went in a bunch of, of outlets and used computers and stuff.
Right.
Electricity will come along.
I would think that that would be a trade-off, the improvements that the patient uses, they'll drastically improve.
Right, and that was my next question, I just wanted to understand that.
I was gonna say that we just.
As part of this, the, uh, service is gonna put in seven thousand dollars approximately to do these repairs. And then just to make the time, you know, if he's putting that much money into it, I assume you're looking for it here. What are you asking for?
What did you?
We're gonna be there as long as we need it, as long as you guys keep us there, and at some point, we're drastically growing, so we're probably gonna need a different building with better parking and things like that, but. This is kind of a temporary, short, long-term fix.
Year two?
We may keep the actual operations in there forever, you know, but.
We start with a couple of years?
A year.
Couple of years?
Probably a couple of years, yeah.
I'd like to see something we can do, give them a nominal fee that they're, they're comfortable with, we're comfortable with, that way Jim can start making his plans and moving forward. A simple boilerplate lease is not a big issue, I don't think there are any concerns on either side. What kind of things would be deal breakers on a lease?
But I would say for the first two years, there's gonna be no payment because he's gonna put the seven thousand dollars.
Make it two, uh, two-year, is that okay? We don't charge it, you know. The, uh, repairs would offset anyway.
Yeah.
And we can agree. And as far as, that's, you know, you can have a whole lease, so you wouldn't have, I think the city should have this. But as far as him, you can grant him permission to. Here, go, I'd start making improvements.
Shane?
Yeah, Mike's, uh, pointed out to me that the only concern would be the electrical, that before they do any work, that they would check with Mike on, on the service up there. We've got, we're four-eating downstairs with converters and everything goes through that, so whoever your electrician is, just make sure to visit with Mike, please.
That is the biggest cause.
Yeah.
That we looked at, because that swans and kind of, I'll tell them.
Okay.
So we're supposed to also talk to them before we start hitting it, and see if the term is the best option.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to propose a motion? Connie? Please, still, for how long, a year, two, two years?
Two years.
Two years? Uh, no charge based on the improvements and that's written lease, come later. Second again? Any discussion? Who called?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
John Lees, there's Lewis this evening, he's prepared two packets, our insurance is due, I want a real question, I have John as a picture.
I don't know.
Because that's obviously good, and, and I'd like someone to take my picture so the journal's starting to have something better.
Yeah. He needs to set up a meeting with. Did everybody get a chance to look at those? You guys talk about it?
I have, I have.
Okay. We brought over, so you have a chance to see them now. When I was there that day, they came over, it was fine. Okay. Well, the insurance renewals in December, so I wanted to just kind of go over, we have some information on the council. Are we? This month, yes. I tried to get in, in February, but we didn't make it. So.
Is it December, does it take effect one January?
December thirty-first.
December thirty-second.
So. There's a lot of information here, I thought maybe you guys would have had a chance to look at this beforehand, but, uh. Uh, I'll just give you a, a little bit of a, a little bit of a. Yes. Correct, right, so it'd be a. At least you have to. I mean, but.
You still have a savings, yeah.
Still have, yeah. Because that's something we have to change, Sean, or.
I would tell you.
Just tell you.
I think you should do that.
I do, boy, yeah, that's. Yeah, I mean, it's, right, because even if something happens.
But it's perfect, okay, two in one, you're eighty. But you're up, over the. You could have two in one.
Tell me, how many times have we had?
Well, I gave you a listen.
Something's upset him.
I have to confess that I've met with John and discussed this and he's answered all of my questions, so I have to.
And I have it, but I haven't talked to John before on.
Yes.
How's the, right, and, and this will probably get better, we probably will have an audit this year.
What'd they do about it?
Yeah.
But that's. Oh, yeah, they do an audit, the, kind of, like.
Right. That didn't have stamina, Mark. Well, the audit was because of the payroll, it was, got some out of that.
John, uh, on the work on audit, uh, we did an internal, uh, report and extrapolated for December and after John's estimation, our payroll for, for the year. And we were within two hundred years, two hundred years, two hundred dollars every year.
Yeah, yeah.
So the number that John is dealing with is within two hundred dollars.
Now, now. It was behind.
Right, we were way behind that, Rob, that's why.
If you guys want to cover this, I did a comparison of last year and this year, uh, right here, this is right here.
Okay, this is just a brief, uh, side-by-side comparison of what's changed, including the premium from last year to this year. The premiums have gone up, uh, partially due to claims, partially due to changes in coverage, okay, and partially due to payrolls. When we started out on the, the biggest increase, that commercial package policy, that's all of your insurance other than the work comp. That's a big factor, so that's why you're building a hundred thousand sewer plant, the police department, keep all liability, all that is in that tag. There was a sizable claim, I have a duty to listen to claims.
We have the city business set up itself.
Um, that's, to me, that's open claims, that's a test amount, but they think it might be.
The potential, it has to.
So, it shows what's paid. Yeah, that's medical, and then their, the reserve is what they think.
Decision, how they wanna keep those.
Okay, so the, add the two together is about what they estimate the dollar to be. Those work comp claims add up quickly. Uh, down below, under, under closed claims, the cycle went down, that was a rupture in the water, we had, that was decided. That's what, a lot of it was driving that increase in that package premium, you see that's kind of, did you see the list of claims?
Yep.
Yeah, so, and then if you go down, you see the property limit, last year was two-point-five million, this year is two-point-eight million. Okay, so, there's quite a bit of increase in property values, and the reason for that is, Shane and I go over this every year, but, uh, I went, we went over the sewer plant, there's a lot of improvements done down there that for some reason they get, are at the speed on the insurance. So, when we went over it, we spent a lot of time, and there was some things that weren't on there. And so, that's, it is a large part of that, uh, approximately three-hundred thousand increase in property value was updated in sewer plant. Along with, there's always an inflation factor, there costs more to build buildings every year. So, you, so with that increase in the premium, you're getting three-hundred thousand more property coverage, about a hundred thousand more of in-linemen.
What is that?
In-linemen is stuff like the back roads and the lawn boards, the stuff that, that moves around, you can equip that mostly, okay? Uh, and then it just, uh, you see at the bottom, you have a, you currently have a one-thousand-dollar deductible on your property coverage. So, we're suggesting you raise it to twenty-five-hundred, and you'd save twenty-five-hundred and thirty-five dollars if you do that. So, you're only increasing deductible by fifteen-hundred, and you're getting savings of twenty-five. However, that deductible is per current, so if you had one of them in claim one year, you'd get twice that. But in order to control the cost, I still think that's a good idea. Now, on the work comp.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Out of these three claims, would that have been?
You would only have, if you had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible, you would have not made a lot.
Okay, so one of these was actually on.
Oh, no, all three of those, I see what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
All three of those would have, they're property claims. So, so two, if you had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible, bottom two, you would not have, you wouldn't have made them. Now, on the work comp, and I don't want to move too fast, if there's any questions, uh, work comp is based on payroll, so the higher the payroll is, the more the premium is. And what they do is, if you have any experience with work comp, is you estimate your payroll at the beginning of the year, they charge you the premium based on underestimated payroll, at the end of the year, they do an audit, and if you underestimated your payroll, then you owe more, and if you overestimated your payroll, you get some money back. The payroll has been somehow got out of way, it's been underestimated, and so, you see at the bottom, we, we raised that up on this renewal to try to keep from having that additional premium due at the end. So, let's see the payroll at the bottom of that sheet, two-hundred-and-three thousand last year, it's two-hundred-and-thirty, is the payroll that is being used to calculate the new premiums. So, that's a big part of that increase there, and that's, you either gotta pay it at the beginning or the end. See, last year, you had a five-thousand-dollar additional premium payment due because the payroll was more than the estimated the year before. So, we're, we're building that in so you don't have that at the end, which, which accounts for a lot of the dangers.
And there's a possibility that we could be under.
If, if you, what do you mean by under?
Well, could be, if payroll came in.
Oh, plus, you get a refund, yes, yeah, with work comp, you're gonna pay, in the end, you're just gonna pay for what payroll you use.
Right.
Yeah, if you overestimate, you get money back at the end, or you, yeah.
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, right, Sean?
Yes.
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand is our payroll per year, so.
And it is rolling down, it's in your package, it's broken out by water department.
I take that number, toss it out there, that pretty well explains our budgets. But yes, the payroll is actually, going, is down this year, we would have lagged again, but the payroll has come down, so we've managed somehow to make the catch-up in the production and payrolls meet this year.
Right.
So, this will be the first time in many, many years that we will not be looking at a surcharge going forward.
A audit, right, yeah. This five thousand was paid in two thousand twelve, was a shortage in two thousand eleven, yeah.
And if we'd had a shortage in twelve, it'd be paid next.
In thirteen, right, right.
But we're gonna be.
Right.
December next year.
They do the audit, uh, right after the policy expires or resumes, yeah. So, that's, that's a, a brief list of what's changed, coverage-wise and, uh, premium-wise. And then, you can see the list of claims that you had this year, and then there's a very detailed list of the coverage, and you have to go through any of that. Basically, you have a total of six million dollars of liability coverage, that's, you, liability coverage on the city-owned automobiles, the, uh, your liability of board members, the police department liability, and liability for the water department, the sewer department. All those are, uh, they have a one-million-dollar prior note with a five-million-dollar umbrella, so it's a total of six million dollars.
You'll notice that the end of the October first policy, we have some inventory list, and I would like to ask each committee member in the next few months to make sure that these lists are accurate and up-to-date. It has been pretty much a, a, a job that Shane and the mayor, Mike and.
I go over with Shane every year.
John comes and meets every year, but it's even like in the police department, I had to go back, Leesers had better records than we did, and we had better, they had better records there on weapons that we owned five years ago than we have now. So, some of our internal records are a little bit lacking, and, and this has been an extremely good tool for us to keep track of. And even though we have many things listed here, uh, serial numbers, even on our premier brush chopper, we should have serial numbers in all of these things. So, if they are stolen, at least we have a record with serial numbers on it, because we're kind of woefully lacking in City Hall and recording all of our serial numbers for all of our equipment. It is a great tool, and I have to thank John's, the Leeser agency for keeping the records as they have, they've helped us out on a couple of occasions.
So, if we do the, if we do the deductible, off that on property, then we, we got our total down to thirty-seven thousand and nine dollars.
Yeah.
We, you know, may next year look into, I would tell you from the finance side, we would look into, um, with levy thirty-one, it went up, we were, you know, we were, we were closer to the figure before, but it's gone up, but we'll have to look at it possibly levy next year on that. But we're not in terrible shape on that, we're not hugely wrong for about six thousand dollars.
Any more questions for John?
Do you want to change, if, if, if we're gonna change the deductible audit, we really ought to decide tonight.
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
If our deductible was a thousand dollars, why could we put a claim in for seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars?
It was, okay, that's how much was paid, so the claim was seventeen-hundred and nine, yeah. Good question, now.
Been pretty much my experience that you save money on higher deductibles. And it also is an incentive for us to be a little more careful, we don't make so many claims, which has the opposite effect of in the future bringing our rates more in line, and accessible better.
That water square in the water department did it, but we have it.
That's, that's what we're worried about, that's why I have.
But you had thirty-five, you couldn't eat that, so.
Okay, so this thirty-nine, five, forty-four is without this?
You would reduce it by twenty-five. Twenty-five, thirty. Make this thirty-seven thousand nine. We levied at thirty-one, and we got the thirty-one last year for a couple of dollars more, so.
Anything else on this?
Well, I'd like to tell John and I if we want to.
We need to do it because.
Before, yeah, we need to do it.
Before our next meeting, we don't have insurance, so.
Right.
We need to do something here.
In my mind, I'd like to, I'd like to try to save, and, and in talking to John, there's some, here's our, our claims have not been that high, I mean, you would usually go without having any claims, right? You don't, you don't normally have a claim every year.
Well, then.
So, if we do that, we'd be ahead, having to do it with my health insurance, and I didn't have to, but.
Then I make a motion that we accept Leesers' coverage premium package, okay, but we are going to reduce our annual premium, we'll take the, we'll change it to a deductible of twenty-five-hundred dollars.
I second that. Any other discussion? Comments? Nothing further, we'll call a question and vote.
Aye.
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 Question carries, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just thought it was.
Sure.
Speaking of audits, Teresa, do you have anything from, uh, is she back there? Yes, she's not. So, we would maybe get our audit number.
Nothing yet, the other Teresa. We haven't received anything yet.
Mr. Page, all ten. Thank you.
All right, all right, well, thank you.
Just letting you know that the check will be in the mail.
So, you're, you're the head of the finance unit? Yes. Okay, well, do you ever want to go over this in more detail? Okay. Just coming out, okay, thanks.
Thank you, John. Uh, we have three more items, I hope, uh, they are relatively easy ones. We have in the past had, had Christmas bonuses for our employees, uh, that sometimes based on salaries, sometimes we've been a flat dollar amount. Uh, we've been kind of tight on money the last few years, not that we're not tight now, but not broke, which is a big improvement. So, the subject of, of Christmas bonuses come up, does anyone have any feeling on that subject? Do we, are we interested, or are we playing a grudge?
What?
It's pretty much the way of one at this point, yes. Do you remember from when you were married down the?
Right.
I think you were still using percentages then.
I think so.
And then we went to a flat, a flat amount because.
But, did you?
Look that up, do we know, uh, your.
Do you remember Barb last year? It was like five-hundred or?
That's what I was gonna say, right around there, and then it was a different, it was different for part-time.
Yes, that's what it was, five-hundred for full-time and two-hundred for part-time, something like that.
Two-fifty or two-hundred, I think it was.
Jason, do you remember?
It's two-hundred, two-fifty, but yeah, it was almost half of us.
Personally, I think everyone who's been working for the city, we have, we're using on a regular basis, has been really putting out. And, uh, I don't like to separate naughty and nice, because I think they've all been good, they all been great, and, uh, I don't know how you feel about, maybe some of the people have helped us gratefully, like mowing, but we do have some regular part-timers that have done outstanding work for the city. And we lose both of our policemen.
How many?
Well, we have Rob, who's part-time, we have both of our policemen who are part-time, we have, uh, yes.
Teresa.
What's your name back there? Teresa? So, that's actually four part-time employees, and, and all of them have done journeyman's work this year, and really been there for us, and, and I think they, most of them have, have worked even on their own time for free.
So, we have Barb, Mike, and Shane for full-time rush, Terry, Mark, and Teresa for?
Part-time, any other part-timers who have been worked, nobody else been working, Terry and Mark, yeah, so. Give them all the same, but that's my feeling. I mean, they're all good employees, and they've all been with us, and they're all gonna continue to be working with us. But it's up to you.
Where's this money gonna come from?
General office.
I don't, I don't have a problem just giving everybody the same, but see what everybody else says.
It is Christmas. Is that okay, are you gonna select Christmas until, I'm gonna politically correct you.
And if you're going to give everybody the same water amount, I'm gonna take it.
Twenty-three or, twenty-three or thirty-five.
I think my feeling is, is those who work the hardest generally make the least and appreciate it the most.
You know? We are considerably better than last year.
Sorry.
As far as, considerably better than last year.
General office.
I'll send her a motion, I'm sorry.
What's, they missed?
I missed your motion.
Is that a motion, is it?
No, I, no.
I missed the emotion there.
I'll make it, just wanna move forward, I'll make a motion for five-hundred dollars to each of our seven lease.
I second.
Any discussion? Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Call it off.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. A couple of simple items here, I don't know, we can make them complicated, or we can make them simple. We are required, it's required by the Freedom of Information Act, to keep the minutes of all meetings. We believe the wording is keep the minutes, uh, we do not. Uh, we do not have to record minutes of committee meetings, but we keep them, which means write them down, or record them. However, we probably should have a policy that needs to be set by council. I guess next year, when we have a different mayor, and some different council members, we will have to have, by law, a FOIA chair of, someone who is responsible for freedom of information. It basically is fallen on my shoulders because nobody else wants to do it. So next year, we'll be in the same position, maybe whoever's mayor will want to do it. Regardless of that, the council needs to set some rules on how we're gonna keep the minutes. Keep the minutes. It's for you to decide, you'll write them down every minute, every time you have a committee meeting, you can select someone to be determined, write down the minutes. After you've written them down, you have to dispose of them, and I don't mean throw them in a garbage can, you have to put them on file. There's a number of ways it could be done. The chairman of the committee could keep them, you could forward them to the city clerk, but at some point, and at some place, those minutes must be except, accessible to everyone, whether it be another council member of the press or the general public. So if, for example, a police committee chairman wants to keep them, that's all right, but somehow a city hall in a file that's controlled by the chairman, which is still accessible to everyone else, it's up to you to decide how you're gonna do it. The law simply says you have to.